All right. Actually, Davis's, the excise tax is on the workshop agenda, so my apologies. Good evening. I'll call the Gray Town Council Workshop to order. My name's Dan McGuire. I'm covering for Krista, our chair tonight, who's home ill. Our interim town manager, Josh, is on a well-deserved vacation, so we won't have anyone representing the town manager with us tonight. But I'll start with roll call. Matthew?
Here.
Marty?
Present.
Ian?
Present.
And I'm also here. So, our first order of business is the motor vehicle excise tax reimbursement for certain veterans. Thirty-six MRS 1483, parentheses, 12. And we received a letter from the state on November 28th. Just a little background, the state had...
Oh, feedback.
I'm not sure what that's from, but the state had... The Department of Motor Vehicles had one set of regulations governing this issue, and the Department of Veterans Affairs had a different set of regulations. They have since reached a compromise, I guess. And we now have a way to move forward so that we can process these claims as we receive them. And that is on packet page... Yes, it's on packet page 42. And that's the memo from Justine, our finance director.
So, why is this on our workshop agenda tonight? It doesn't seem like something that...
Well, there's two issues. There's the one we've been waiting for clarification so we can move forward. But probably the biggest piece for us is, is to whether or not this will be retroactive or something that goes forward.
Okay.
So I guess that's really probably the place to start. I believe one of the claims that we have goes back a year or two. I don't remember the exact date. So I guess that's really the first point. We can go around and people can sort of express their view as to whether we should make this retroactive or whether we should have this go forward. I did speak with Krista this afternoon. She's definitely in favor of, you know, processing these claims when we get them. But she doesn't think that we should do them retroactively. We should do them going forward. I don't know how the rest of the group feels.
Well, I haven't... I have not digested all this. I've looked through it. And I don't know if there is a procedure set out, you know, for applying for it.
There is a procedure, yeah.
And I would say that from the point that that procedure has been, you know, like, if somebody has filed a request, you know, I would say the date of, you know, the date that that procedure was followed from the person seeking the reimbursement, you know, we should go forward from that date.
Which date is... I guess I'm not sure what you mean by the date the procedure is.
Well, if, for veterans to apply for this reimbursement or exemption... You know, the date that we've got that request from, you know, seems to me would be logical to go forward from that date.
To honor those requests and then go forward from there.
Yeah.
The issue was, if you remember, that the Department of Veterans Affairs required vets to use disabled plates...
Right.
On their cars.
And DMV.
And some of them didn't want to give them up because they had other plates that were important to them. And it went, that's went back and forth. And now, basically, the Department of Veterans Affairs said it doesn't matter what plate veterans want to use.
Yeah. And I totally agree with that.
Yeah.
You know, we should honor, you know, the disability, not, you know, what plate they have. But, you know, so in my mind, we should go forward from the date that the request was made.
Okay.
You know.
That makes sense to me. That's kind of a similar arrangement when, I don't know, when somebody applies for social security disability and they, they end up, if they get denied initially or if there's some sort of time interruption ultimately, and they get awarded ultimately, that they get awarded back to the time they applied. Obviously, that has nothing to do with these plates, but I just think that, you know, that there's some justification for that.
Marty, do you have any?
I would say regardless of what plate they use, it should be retroactive because they are disabled.
To... So would that be for the requests that we currently have or all requests that come in in the future?
I'd say all of them.
Okay. I think I'm of a mind to honor the requests that we have. But going forward, any new requests, I would think it would be fair to just honor them from that point on.
Yes, I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree too.
Okay.
But, yeah, I'm, as far as, you know, going back to the retroactive, it seems to be in the motion that we're going to come to in the meeting is phrased so as to be retroactive to the effective date of the law. So that, to me, that if there's a gap between the effective date in the law and the date at which the exemption was requested, I would go back to the date the exemption was requested as opposed to the effective date of the law.
So I guess there's really, to simplify it, there's the date the law was passed, the date that we had the first applications, and we've had two, and then going forward.
Yes.
So if I'm understanding the group, except for Marty would like to go all the way back to the date the law was effective. But I'm hearing Matt and Ian, and it's Krista too, I think, are thinking that for the two that we have, those would be the effective date for the two applications, and then any new ones coming in, it would just be going forward.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. I just want to make sure I get my notes right. But you're right. And we'll have a chance to modify the motion when we get to that part in the next meeting. All right. Anything else on that one?
No.
All right. I think we can, we can move on. So the next thing was the MDOT cooperative agreement. Check in, and Ian, and Krista, as I understand it, had a meeting with MDOT?
Yeah, we met with Dale Doughty, who's the planning director for MDOT last Thursday via Zoom. And so we, if you recall, we had, at our last council meeting, had spent a fair amount of time looking over the cooperative agreement, what we've in the past referred to as an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, with the MDOT that would govern at least this next design phase for the Village Transformation Project. And so we had marked up the draft that Dale had given us and sent, I sent back those edits. And he was very, so we were reviewing the cooperative agreement. He was very agreeable to the suggestions we'd made, which was really exciting. And so there's actually, we had this on the agenda because we thought there might, you know, he might have pushed back on some stuff.
Yeah.
And we thought we might need to. But in fact, I don't have anything for us to discuss tonight. Just another update that he also said that Ernie, who's, has, had been assigned our project manager, Ernie Martin, has really deployed, doing a bunch of other stuff right now. And so it's Ernie's boss who'll step in and serve as our project manager for the, at least for the next short term, which I, you know, apparently is, you know, also good news. I mean, he's apparently very excited about this project. And so that's, that's good news. That's what I have for you. No, no real stuff to chew over, luckily.
So can we look at the agreement? Because it's in our packet for tonight. Let's see, it is on packet page 25, it starts.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five, yes, yep. One question I had, and you may not know these. This may be questions for Josh when he gets back. But has the town's attorney reviewed this version?
Okay, thank you, yeah. That was another update I meant to give. I sent it to her and asked, I, you know, it's a terrible time of year to be asking people to take on another project or another little task. And so I kind of apologized to her in advance. But she, I asked, I told her that we would like to be able to vote on this on our January 2nd meeting.
Yeah.
And, because there was, Dale had to send it to his attorney and, you know, clean up the draft, which he wasn't going to be able to do in time for tonight's meeting. So we'll have to table it one more time. But we'd really like to get this done by January 2nd. So she, so Alyssa, our town attorney, was, sent me a note saying that she would really try to get it done by Thursday. She's off next week, but if she doesn't get it done by Thursday, she'll assign it to somebody else at Jensen Bear. And so that we'll have legal review in time for our next meeting on January 2nd. So, yeah, I'm hopeful. And I mean, Alyssa, I wasn't sure because I wasn't on the council last year how much involvement she'd had in, whether she'd seen previous drafts, for example. And she said she really wasn't terribly up to date or aware of this project. So I gave her a bit of background. But, I mean, at this point, as written, the, it's a pretty straightforward agreement, I think. I mean, I asked her to identify any, you know, any things that she thought were showstoppers for the town. But, you know, I'm not an attorney, so that's why we're getting, you know, that sort of legal review. But I'm really hopeful that she doesn't see anything that's going to slow this thing down.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that she's taking a look at it. I mean, at this point in the project, you know, we've had a couple of false starts on Yarmouth Road, and then there was the opportunity to start Main Street, and then the conversation with MDOT. So it really has gone through a bunch of different iterations. And so it's probably really the first time where it's worth having the town's attorney take a look at it.
Right. That's what I figured, yeah. And, yeah, I think, I mean, I'm really hopeful we'll be able to get this agreement signed. This really just covers the preliminary design phase, remember? So this isn't the last agreement we'll sign with MDOT. But it'll get us much further down the road to finalizing the design so that we can be in a place where we can be ready to apply for the federal RACE grant, which is planned for, you know, if it goes as it has in the last couple of years, it'll get released sometime in November with a due date of February or something like that. So that's kind of what we're aiming toward.
I think too, it's important for folks to remember that. We have done some other work, especially on Yarmouth Road. And normally, when we enter this kind of an agreement with the state, the town is required to pay a portion of the cost for the design phase. And the state is basically taking the work we've done on Yarmouth Road to date as our payment towards this design phase. So this agreement with the state isn't going to cost us any additional money.
Yeah.
The state will actually put quite a bit of money into the design from now on.
Yeah.
And I think, just to emphasize your point, I really like the fact that this is kind of broken up in pieces now. And so we're really, we're just talking about the design. If we can get past that, you know, then we can start hammering out the issues about construction. There was one other question I had. You may not know the answer. Let me see if I can find it in my notes here. There was one term I didn't, I didn't understand. On packet page 34, under the general provisions, there's a section C, the State of Maine's rights of set off.
Right. We flagged that in our, in our discussion last time, I think. None of us understood what that meant. That was one of the things we wanted Alyssa to take a look at.
Okay.
And this, this version that's in the packet is a really cleaned up version. I mean, basically, all of the track changes and stuff have been hidden. What I sent to Alyssa was a simple version, which included our comments.
Yes.
And, but not all the track changes, busyness, which is, makes it hard to read. So I think, you know, she should see that.
Again, I spoke with Krista today. On packet page 38 are her comments about this project. And we've talked about this several times. I just wanted to make sure, since she wasn't going to be here tonight, that she felt like all the things that she had brought up were addressed, and she feels that that's the case.
When I incorporated the council's comments in the, in this most recent version that was, I sent back to Dale and to Alyssa, I, before I sent it to Dale, I sent it to Krista, and she added a couple more comments. So I'm assuming at this point she...
Yeah, she said that she was, that she was okay with it. The only other question I had was on packet page 39. We have Josh's input. And I know we talked about this with Josh before he left. And if I'm, remind me if I'm not recalling this correctly, but I believe he was all set too with the issues that he raised.
I agree. I think that's the case. And the other thing I did was, because Doug had had, and I think that's the next...
Next one, yeah.
Yeah.
Package page 40.
Yeah. Doug had flagged a bunch of stuff. I ended up just appending whatever wasn't already in the agreement in Appendix A and listing those remaining items as... I'm not 100% sure if they belong in the initial design phase, in this phase, but I really wanted to make sure they were a part of this agreement so that, or at least that they were on the table as we finalize this agreement so that we could agree that, no, we're going to deal with those, but in the next agreement, or we're going to, we're going to work with them or include them in this agreement. So that's the current status. We'll see what MDOT legal this is, you know.
Well, and, yeah, I just, I think it's good to just reiterate the fact that there's been a lot of input from a lot of different directions.
Yeah.
And that's made it, I think, a much better document from all of our perspectives. And so I think it was good to just do a quick review.
Yeah, great.
I'm just looking forward, oh, go ahead. Well, looking forward to the meeting when this is on the agenda. Are we ready to take it off the table?
Well, we're, we'll have to, no, we won't, we won't. We'll do that at our next meeting, hopefully. We'll have to wait and see.
Once, yeah, once we get the attorney review and a draft back from DOT with all the changes and all that stuff.
Did you cer, I may have missed it. Did you circulate the version that you sent to MDOT?
I don't think I did to the full council, but I can, yeah, for sure.
When you have a chance?
Yeah.
No hurry, thanks. Anything else about the MOU? All right. The next order of business on our workshop is the council task list updates through this year, this calendar year. And on the agenda, it talks specifically about the MDOT Village Transformation, comp plan coordinators, cannabis, shoreline water quality roads, and there's a whole variety of other ones. I can kick it off. I went through and I printed out my list of the ones that I'm sort of the lead for. And I just wanted to go through it really quickly and get your input to see if I'm going the way the majority wants. The first one for me is in regards to the commercial solar array property tax. We've talked, I know Krista has, and I think maybe you have too, talked to some of our state legislatures. The issue there is that when the legislature created a statute to prevent towns from taxing solar arrays on private homes, they overlooked the question of commercial solar arrays and inadvertently exempted them from property tax too. So we have one solar array that's up and running in town that we can't tax, other than the value of the land, and another solar array up off of Hillcrest Road that's under construction that we won't be able to tax. We are able to recover half of the money because the state does have a process whereby if they create a statute that denies the town income, that we can get 50% of that back. So, and we've done that. So it helps a little bit. But we had it on our list as a goal to try and change that law. They are commercial solar arrays. They're not non-profit solar arrays. So it feels reasonable that the town should be able to tax those as any other commercial development in town.
Is the value of the array taxed separately from the property?
It is now, yes, because we can't tax the value of the array. Yeah. We can only tax the value.
Can we tax the commercial property and not the residential?
Well, it doesn't matter. I mean, nothing, nothing is taxed right now. So, yeah, we, that's the, the state mandate. We don't control that.
But the idea is to get the state to change.
Ultimately, to get it changed. It's a pretty low priority, and there's not a lot of support in Augusta, truthfully, because the governor's kind of gung ho on solar. And the more the merrier is kind of that. So I don't think it's anything we're going to see changed anytime soon. The due date on it was November 30th, so I guess I'm looking to kick this out quite a distance because we've done pretty much everything I think we can do.
Well, have we met with our legislators?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay, on this, on this issue, yeah.
Yeah.
But that is, as I understand that item, that is the goal, that is the, the goal of the item is to get the state law changed.
Yep. The other one that's on mine is the comprehensive plan coordinators reports. Lacey, one of the comprehensive plan coordinators is here this evening. So we have had a conversation about restarting our conversation with you, but we haven't gotten really any further than that. Do you have something you want to say?
No, we just...
You'd have to come to the microphone if you want to say anything at all. Just because no one can hear you from there.
So my name is Lacey, and I'm in the living gray, 45 Lake Avenue. So I was on the original comp plan. And when no one else stepped forward to be the comp plan coordinator, I felt sort of obligated that I would take the role on. Lisa Laney-Gilmore is with me. So we felt we did a pretty good job the first go around.
Yes.
And we do see the need to follow up on some of the details of, people said like, we would like to X, Y, Z, or we're thinking about, or their action items weren't even really part of the comp plan. So I think the town council last spring said, let's push them a little bit more and get more details. And also have their, their wish list on their committees tie into their budget. So if they're wanting something that is on the comp plan, is their event or their project costing money that they could sort of elaborate better to maybe get it justified or not? So we do need to push forward on it. But then we kind of laxed on pushing forward with, I call it, Phase Two, from what we already collected from everyone. So if there's anything new, we need to know what new details we need to know from what we heard and did last spring, winter.
For me, the old adage of when you're presenting something, you tell them, tell them what you told them, and then you tell them again. You know, we used to have that old thing. I think it's the same thing with the comp plan. The goal is for, I think our goal is to get everybody to integrate it into the work they do, whether it's the town staff or the TC committees. So I think you're right, taking the next step and going back and seeing what they've done to date. And if they haven't really moved the needle on that, having them get reconnected to that conversation. We have talked as a council about how we get information back from our committees, and it's pretty much through the liaisons. So each of us's liaison should be trying to emphasize the fact that the committee should be focusing on the comp plan too.
But I feel like your conversations are listening perhaps and scribbling down some notes. And I think our goal with this comp plan coordinator follow-up would be coordinating it so everyone is asked the same questions, expected to give the same kind of answers. And if they're kind of wishy-washy, push a little further to get better clarity. And with better clarity, hopefully more action. So we will present.
Yeah, I think that's perfect. I don't know, others?
Yeah, I think, I agree with Dan that we can't emphasize the importance of the connection between the committee work and the comp plan too often. You know, I just think it's, it's important to keep connecting those dots because otherwise, it's a document, the comp plan is a document that just sits on a shelf, and that's not why we did it. So I think it does, it is important. So Lacey, did you have a, I'm not sure if I missed this, but a plan for sort of Phase Two and when that starts or...
Well, we just said we would survey them with questions of like, what are your goals? What, if you're planning an event, what day, what year? What supplies do you need? Do you need manpower from the town? Do you need promotion? Do you need a facility? What do you need? What's the cost of those needs? But a lot of it was also, most of the comp plan really was done by the town staff. And most of the town staff kind of knows what the other staff is doing. So maybe there's some action items on the comp plan that are kind of irrelevant, but not in a, oh, we're done with that totally way, like shoreline zoning, like all that kind of stuff is always being improved upon and looked at. So some things maybe have been done. But then there's others that need coordination. Not only with, between the town employees, you've got some new leadership and stuff, but the committees and the town staff that are directly related, like open space or planning or whoever the department is. So there's connectivity. And that, that thing we did here a year or so ago, something like that, it might be a good celebration or, once, once we have the data and we've shared with everyone, to have a discussion, like a round robin discussion with everyone on the same page, looking at the same data that we're push-forwarded. So maybe late spring.
Yeah, I think we can certainly, you know, look at a date. We didn't have that meeting in this past fall like we had the year before for a variety of reasons. But I think reestablishing that is definitely part of that. So, yeah. If you want to propose a target date after you get some information back from the committees, that would be good, that would be helpful for us, I think.
Okay.
Any other thoughts or questions? Okay.
So Lisa and I will move forward with whatever we presented.
Yeah.
And part of it was just drafting a document and then emailing them out. And then, then the push is, this is a serious document. It's not like a, oh, if you get a chance, it's like, we need to put this on your agenda.
Yeah.
And some committees meet once a month. Some don't meet every month. But I would say, you know, hopefully for their February, March agendas, to get it on their agenda, they're discussing it because it's tising with the budget. And then, you know, by April, we have data to put together in a packet.
Well, once you send that out, all of us's liaisons to our committees can just, you know, emphasize that and make a point of getting the committee to concentrate on what you send and responding to it.
Probably like the end of January, be ready because, like, if they're meeting in a week or two weeks, it's not very ready. But if they're meeting the end of January, which some committees do, then they're probably ready for them by then.
Yeah. It probably would, I imagine, be the end of February before we hit everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And the only other thing I can think of is, as you're doing your work with the comp plan, the comp plan is also a document that, it's not like set in cement. So as the town evolves, the plan needs to evolve. So if there are pieces of the plan that either don't seem as pertinent or have changed because of something else that's happening in town, I think if you and Lisa notice that in your travels, that would be very helpful feedback for us to get.
I'm a little rusty on what we found out.
Yeah, no.
So I'll look at those. But there were some, some things, yeah.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Great, thanks.
My other, my next one was creating a timeline to discuss various issues with roads. I know that Krista, Krista and I received an email from Joan Fawcett from Deer Acres, who's approached us before about the town accepting Deer Acres as a road. They're putting together a plan to rebuild the road, and they would like to have a work... They're putting together a plan to rebuild the road, and they would like to have a workshop with us. And I think actually Doug was included in the email, he wanted to come in and talk to Doug about the road standards and to see...
Which road is that?
Deer Acres.
Oh, okay.
And so that's, you know, in, in the works. The next one of mine was the engage the legislative team to develop a plan to address the new Gloucester toll booth, the barrier on the turnpike. That's kind of in the same boat as the solar array. We have to talk to our legislators. We've talked to folks at MTA and even MDOT, there's needless to say, reluctance on the part of MTA to even address the issue, so I think that it's important for us to take any opportunity we get to talk about it with them, but there isn't really any action, I don't think, that, beyond that, that we can do. I don't really see this one as having a due date, to be honest with you.
Unfortunately, yeah.
I'm not sure, I'll, I'll be around when this, this one gets sorted out. The other one was a review of the short-term rental ordinance. You may remember GP Cog created a tool that basically scrapes all of the short-term rental sites like Airbnb and VRBO and the other ones, and then plots those on a map. So we created an ordinance asking people to contact the town hall and to register with us, not that we had created any rules for them to follow, but we just wanted to get a sense of how big of a, a market there is in the town of Gray. No one has done that, but there are six, more than sixty of these STRs in town. And the ordinance had a, a deadline for applying and enforcement piece. I think we as a council have to have a discussion about whether we, you know, what do we wanna do? I mean, if we're gonna enforce it, it's gonna take a lot of work on the, on town staff, what's the value of doing that? We're not getting a lot of complaints about that, but we do have some concerns, a lot of them are on the lakes, and we have the water quality issues and some of the other things we talked about, so I think we have to decide how much we wanna do on this. Because if we want the staff to follow the ordinance as it's written, then they're gonna have to start sending out letters of demand and, so, I, I don't, given how busy they are, I'm not sure this is the most pressing issue myself.
Is there a fee associated with?
There's a fifty dollar fee, yes.
And, and Dan, you said there sixty have filed, or sixty, we know that there are sixty?
We know there's sixty plus in town, no one has...
How do we know that?
The, the tool that GP Cog created,
Okay.
that basically goes out and, and basically downloads all of the ads that are on the web
Oh, okay.
from the various services, and then plots them on a map for us. So it's a service that they created that they're letting all of their members use for the first year free. I think they're actually looking to develop this into like an app that they can sell to other municipalities to, 'cause other municipalities, Fountain, Cape Elizabeth, a lot of others, South Portland, have a lot of rules around STRs. And there's a lot of money involved in their ordinances. And so there's a market there, because it's quite expensive for them to, to deal with this.
I mean, at the very least, it makes sense to me that to send the sixty, you know, a letter saying, "Oh, you may not know, but we do have this ordinance, and we're looking for you to, and we know because of your advertising as a short-term rental, that you're operating this, and, and that we are asking you to comply with our ordinance and, and, you know, register."
We could, I don't think it would take much to, you know, create a letter and, and send them a copy of the ordinance.
Right.
I'd say we should be going to the, these, these locations to check for, for, for safety and building regulation, or is that?
Our, our, we specifically stayed away from that because there's a whole, if we, and that's why this is kind of a slippery slope, and that's why for some communities it's become very expensive. If we start in, doing inspections, then we take on a certain liability for saying that such and such is so-and-so. So, you know, right now, our planning department has, you know, trouble keeping up with the work that we have. If we were to add STRs onto it, it would be a really big expense for the town. So the council at the time decided that we didn't wanna go there. All we wanted to do is find out, how many do we have?
Lots to start.
Yeah, I mean, that was basically it.
I, I think, I think the goal of finding out how many there are is, is a good one. And, and it, it situates us to, you know, enact standards if we ever, you know, if, if we had a problem, you know, that was identified. So, yeah, I, I agree that, you know, basically, we enacted an ordinance and, but didn't target and target notify anybody at the time we passed the ordinance.
Not beyond the public notification we do for everything, right?
Right, right. And so, I mean, it's, it's totally understandable that, that...
Lots of people don't know.
Right. So unless we wanna abandon the whole effort, it, it seems to me like a logical next step to send out a letter. And I don't know if they send out, I don't know if they do registered letters or not when they do something like that, but I would, I would...
Yeah, I was, I was agreeing, a registered letter might make sense, yeah.
Oh, I was gonna say the opposite, basically.
Oh, really?
That, from my, my experience, you know, like, just getting a regular letter is, at least when I used to, you know, when I used to be, you know, away from the, you know, away from the house all day when I was working, you know, you know, a certified letter would come, but I wouldn't get it, you know, and I'd have to go down to the post office to get it, and, you know, what's my motivation to do that, you know, kind of thing? So as opposed to, if I just got a letter or an e, you know, maybe an email blast would be good too?
Well, we would, we would need to get the contact information first, so I think if we maybe just started with a letter and see what kind of response we got.
I just mean, like, a general email blast, whoever we've got their email address from.
Well, we could ask Kyle certainly to put it on the, you know, the news as a reminder. I know it went out when we first passed it, but it never hurts to, to do it again.
I, I think it makes sense to send a, you know, send a letter.
Marty, what do you think?
That's a good idea.
All right, the next one that's on my list is the Cumberland Farms and Stillwater Contract Zones. From Marty and Matthew perhaps. The contract zones allow the council to enter into a contract with a, a individual or a developer or a business to do something beyond or outside what we currently have ordinances for. So for instance, Cumberland Farms was built under a contract zone, and there were many things that were embodied in that contract zone agreement with Cumberland Farm that aren't in our ordinances, but that many of them we would like to see. So for instance, for as long as I've been on the council, I've wanted us to write an ordinance with regards to filling stations, and I would like the ordinance to adopt, adapt, adopt, pardon me, all of the requirements that we put on Cumberland Farms when we created the CZA. So for instance, we required some additional environmental controls that went above and beyond what our regular ordinance requires, and even to some extent what the state requires. We allowed them to tap into the storm drain system to help solve some of their storm drain issues that they had on the site. And they paid a fee for that and actually replaced one of the storm drain part of the, catch basements as part of their development. What we didn't do, but which we realized we should have done then, is that we should have added an annual maintenance fee to that too, for that particular catchment basin. Going forward, we can do that. The problem is, we've been so busy with so many other things, we haven't had the, the horses to go back and, and to do this. So I think there's still good things that someday maybe we'll get to. In the case of Stillwater Pines, which is Woodcock Drive, I think it is, they came to us looking for a different road standard than what was required for the zone that they're in, which reduced the amount of impervious surface in the development, which is something that the council was eager to do to help with the stormwater issues, especially because the Pleasant River runs through that development, and we know that the Pleasant River is stressed as it is. So we went ahead and did that, but now that, the rules for that zone don't include the rules in the Stillwater subdivision. So ideally, we'll get to a point where we'll be able to look at the zones and make some of those changes, and I think that fits in to some extent with that Deer Acres conversation about roads in general, but I think we might be able to blend those two together.
Yeah, I mean, it, as, as Doug works on the, on the edits or the changes to the zoning ordinances to bring them into compliance with the comprehensive plan, is that, I mean, is, is that part of what he should be doing?
I think he is, yeah. I think that's the timeline it's on. My concern is that we have other filling, in the case of the Cumberland Farms one, we have other filling stations in town that could be renovated at any point in time, and if we don't do this work before then, they'll be built under the existing standards, which I don't think are as beneficial for the town as, as the ones we agreed to with Cumberland Farms. The next one is design review for the villages, in the Village proper, we did that design standards, we pretty much did that as, and we took care of the self-storage issue, we moved that along, and that's been done. I think, and I've expressed this to all you, but we haven't talked about it in public, I guess we did. I think that was only one side of that coin, the setbacks for the, the self-storage units. The other part of it is residential construction in the commercial zones, so there's nothing that prevents residences from being built in those zones. Our commercial zones only encompass about two percent of the area of town. We still think at some point in time we're gonna have to address that, whereby it's okay to build residential buildings in those zones, but only particular kinds of residential buildings, ones that can be converted later. Right now, it's going in there are single-family houses, and that's gonna tie up that property for decades, and, and it will be underutilized all the while it's a residential house. So that's the other one on my list, but I'm gonna push all those dates out, and I'm sorry to take up so much time, but that's my list.
Okay.
Yeah, question, I'm guessing a dairy farm is not, not considered a commercial, it's agriculture? Okay.
Do any of you have anything that's on the agenda list or on your own list that you wanna talk about now?
Um, I'll, yeah, go ahead.
You're first.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was gonna talk about open space and LD1. So open space, I'm the liaison to the open space committee, and, and I, I think somewhat to the committee's surprise, we haven't actually worked on actively conserving any open space in town. We've, since its inception, 'cause this is the first time the town has ever had an open space committee, the town, I mean, the committee has been sort of working on creating an open space plan, and, and and then more recently, we've been busy talking to developers at, at an early stage in the, in the subdivision process. It's sort of sketch plan, so that they come to us and say, "We, we wanna set aside some land as open space, where do you think it should go?" You know, here's kind of where we're thinking of the, the development going, but what do you think? And so we can look at maps that show us where our existing trails are, where's other existing open space, or, you know, and, and that's already conserved, and, and recommend to them. In one case, we suggested that they create, actually create a path through the buffer in order to do, you know, connect to another trail system in town, and, and so that's been a really positive thing. And we're also gonna be, we'll talk, I was gonna mention this in our, in, under the council, you know, committees in the meeting, in our next meeting, but I, I mean, the, Krista, Kristin suggested, Kristin Muziski, our planner, suggested that we come and have a workshop with the planning board on January eleventh to talk with them about this. It just, you know, those were kind of test cases, the two, two or three developers that we talked to. And so we're gonna kind of more formalize that process with the planning board and sort of delineate roles and responsibilities. And so I think that's very positive, and I, that will, that helps to address the comp plan's interest in, in, you know, preserving open space, however we do it. I mean, not, we don't, you know, actually buying land or, or buying development rights to land is not the only way to, to preserve it. So, you know, the, the developers setting it aside in subdivisions is, is another way.
That's a huge step forward, I think, yeah.
Yeah, it's really exciting. And, and I just, I mean, I just have to brag about the open space committee because it's just been so fun to watch these people, it's not all the same people who, who showed up in the beginning, but several of them have been with us throughout, and, and just to see them kind of grow in their understanding of how the town works and how to work with the council and, and how to get things done at the committee level. They just have, have really come a long way, and it's, it's really exciting to watch them work, and to feel like I can just sort of sit back and listen and, and don't have to be as actively involved, so that's really fun. The LD1 is, is a, was a, we, we, it tends to get referred to as LD1, although it's, it's kind of confusing and misleading because every year, there's a new LD1 in the legislature, so what, what it refers to is, and I don't have the, the proper title in, in mind, but it was a, an effort to, to curb the increase in municipal taxes, tax rates, and, and so it, it created the state-imposed cap on municipal budgets, not on school budgets, simply on town budgets, town and city budgets. And, and if there was, they created this baseline, and you could only increase a certain amount year over year on, on, on the baseline. So Gray was in a, is in a very unusual circumstance, it's one of the few towns in the state that has the council approve a budget, but then, that has to go to the voters to approve in a, we use a referendum process, or, you know, we voted the polls, as opposed to an in-person town meeting usually. And, and what that means is that in, in just about every other town in Maine, unless it's a city that, where the council just has charge of the budget and that the voters don't vote on it, that we, we get into the situation where when we exceed the cap, you can exceed the cap, but you have to ask permission from the voters, which, you know, makes sense, but it's really difficult to have a conversation with the voters about that warrant article that, that we asked them to vote on, and, and what we have found in recent years is that, you know, voters get scared by it, and they don't understand it, and they think that we're asking them to approve an amount over and above the actual budget amount that we're asking them to approve, 'cause it's just confusing. So we've asked our legislative team, our state legislative team, to, to see about repealing this LD1, and I think it, it may happen in this session. It, it has gone to the legislative council, and there's bipartisan support for eliminating it, and, and so we'll see what happens. But I, I just, I mean, it, two-thirds of our municipal budget is, or, or the, you know, what property taxes pay for in the town is, is the school system, so it, it, it has never really made a lot of sense that the, that it's only the town's budgets that are capped and not the school districts, and, and and again, I mean, in other towns, if they have an in-person town meeting, they can have a conversation about what the LD1 means, but in most cases, it's not an issue. But Gray's, I mean, this is really getting into the weeds, but, I mean, the, the folks who were on the council back when this was first enacted kept, made sure that Gray's baseline budget was very low, so it just put us in a position where we're gonna hit that cap, whether we receive money from the state, for example, or, or decide to raise more revenue through taxes or, or some other means, and, and so it just, it just puts us in a really difficult position with voters, and I, I think it would be a lot easier not to have it.
Well, yeah, and I think also, the, the problem with LD1 is, is you, because of the, this formula that was devised twenty-four years ago, and the, the baselines from twenty-four years ago, that you basically end up with nonsensical results that are, yeah, irrelevant, you know, even if you're not actually, you know, if your budget goes up and you have other sources of revenue, you're still, you know, yeah, as you, as you mentioned, you're still on the hook, even... you're still on the hook, even though there's not gonna be a commensurate impact of, to taxpayers.
On the property taxpayers, yeah.
You, you're still kinda hung up by this with, you know, I, I, I think nonsensical results. That, I think that's the more pressing reason to, to change the law or get rid of it.
Yeah, there are a lot of reasons. So anyway, I, you know, we'll just have to see how things go in this session, but it seems
We'll see what happens.
Seems hopeful.
Matthew, did you have some on the list that you wanted to discuss?
I lost my list here. Hold on just a second, it's right here. So the only one we haven't discussed so far is the, um, that's on my list, is the, uh, review existing medical and recreational cannabis ordinance. Um, we did all, I believe, or at least four of us, I don't know if you took the training, Marty, but there was some, um, training put on by, uh, Maine Municipal Association and they had the representatives from the state cannabis policy office, if that's the right, and, um, and also a gentleman from the city of Portland. And it was, I thought, excellent train, training, just full of information that I, I had no idea. So it was excellent training. Uh, Krista and I sat down afterwards, talked about, um, so, so something the council did earlier was task Krista and I to come up with some ideas, um, for how to set up an ad hoc committee. Or I think Krista and I decided it should be an ad hoc committee anyway. And, uh, we discussed some things to task that committee to advise the council on. And we, we, you know, talked about the, the makeup of the committee and, and those things. Krista captured it all in notes and I didn't take any notes.
Okay.
So I don't remember the, the details, but that's where we're at with that item, anyway. We, we, I think we, we, we talked about having a workshop in January to, you know,
Iron out the details.
Iron out the details, you know, and flesh out the outline that Krista and I came up with.
Yeah, the council did decide to create an ad hoc committee, so. Okay.
That's, that's
Okay. Marty, how about you? You got anything?
I have nothing.
Okay. Um, the only other one that's on here that we really haven't spoken to is the Shoreland Water Quality.
Yeah.
The update there, we were approached, Wyndham has recently updated their water quality standards for Shoreland. Since we share a lake with Wyndham, Little Spigot Lake, um, it makes sense that, um, we adopt a similar set of standards for the whole lake. So we were going to start with that. The council decided at the time that we wanted to create a water quality, um, set of standards that would apply to all the lakes in town. So it may need to be massaged a little bit. Um, I know that it's on Doug's list and it's just really a matter of us, um, getting some of these other things done so that we have some time, staff has some time to start working on this one.
You know, the Resiliency Committee, um, is, uh, I, I think I mentioned at our last council meeting had, has identified five sort of more general focus areas, um, you know, any one of which could take them reams of time. So I've, I've been encouraging them to kind of, uh, focus their gaze. Yeah. Um, so that work is in progress, but, um, one of the areas that they mentioned was in water, lake water quality and I, I think that's a big one.
Be a great one for them to take on, to start.
Because the, the state, um, office of, I don't, I, I'm not gonna remember the name
GoPiff?
GoPiff, yes, thank you. And, um, they, uh, have grants coming out, um, and I, and I think I had mentioned that at the last meeting, there's an upcoming grant round, I think that, well, the grant is out. Um, it, it won't be due until the end of March and it's only available to towns that haven't previously applied, where the second round in twenty-four, twenty twenty-four will be available to any municipality. So, um, it's a fifty thousand dollar grant and it can be used to hire consultants or to do other work. And, and so I'm, you know, water quality is pretty high on my list. I, I mean, I, my family has a camp on a lake, uh, over in Raymond Panther Pond. And, uh, you know, since childhood, I've seen that water quality of that lake degrade and, and, um, so I, I, and there's lots of stuff that could happen around improving water quality, including something that the resilience committee is really interested in, which is public education and, uh, but, um, I, I, you know, contributors to the degradation of, of lake water quality include things like, you know, road runoff and, um, failing septic systems. I don't know to what extent that's still an issue, but, um, you know, there, there are different ways that we could approach this, so.
Yeah. Now, I think it would be excellent if, um, if Resiliency wanted to, to start that ball rolling. I know that soils and water conservation folks have also done some work for us over the years.
Right.
I think most of that's been rivers and streams, but I think they've done some work on, on lakes too. And we also had a presentation not long ago from a group at St. Joseph's, um, that worked with the Little Spigot Lake Association to do some water quality work there. So maybe we could hook Resiliency up with them too as a starting point. I'm sure I could dig out that information that they sent us.
I think I saw that one and I, I don't know if I was on the council or what, but
We can certainly get that information, yeah.
I was, I was on the Resiliency Committee before I, before I got on the council and it was, that was my intro to, to, um, Gray Government, um, Gray Civic Matters. And, uh, they did do a pretty significant outreach effort, um, you know, interviewing, interviewing people, um, and, uh, they had, had a gathering where I thought they had a pretty good turnout.
Yeah, they did.
And, and, and I was involved in a lot of the interviews and, you know, water quality was, was pretty significant, uh, uh, you know, like pretty repeatedly mentioned and, you know, um, came out pretty high on the, uh, the score of how many things, how many times things were mentioned, so.
All right. I think that wraps it up, kind of just on time. Um, that finishes our workshop for tonight. We will take a five-minute recess and start our regularly scheduled meeting at five past seven.